Answer. So I wonder how much that costs. So they'll stay in. Dustin. They'd have to spend the night a thousand, maybe thousands because they're they've never been alone overnight.
And they don't you don't have to pay.
Dustin, can you wave if you can hear us?
Yeah, like, yeah, I I can hear you. Can you hear me?
They've heard about.
Timber gone back.
Okay.
That was. Go ahead to the towns. Yeah, we probably weren't even getting any fun like we.
Yeah, regular news. On this regular work session meeting for July twenty third, twenty twenty five with the Toledo City Council to order. Our first item is Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I will take a roll call. Counselor Coughlin. Counselor Sylvia.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Nick. Counsel Burns.
Oh, yeah.
Counsel Keating. Counsel President Bush.
Better than you do from here.
And I am present. We have seven forums. We can conduct business. Are there any visitors that would like to address council this evening, whether in person or remotely? Have no consent agenda tonight. Have no community service reports or presentations. We have no discussion of information items. Decision items. First, consider approving collective bargaining agreement.
Nothing to discuss there, Mayor.
Nothing to discuss. Thank you very much. Next item, and and we have a we have a letter seeking approval for the city of Toledo to move forward in efforts to acquire the former Department of Forestry property at seven sixty three Northwest Forestry Drive, seven thirty three Northwest Forestry Road in Toledo. Um, so see if I can find the if you look in your revised packet, I submitted this letter to Justin, Brian, um, and of course, our city manager uh for their review to see if I touched all the correct bases. So two years ago, um, it was brought to my attention in March two years ago that um, this property was going to be surplus because the Department of Forestry was going to be moving sites. Um, and I'll be honest, taking Governor Kotek at her word that housing was the number one priority of the state. I began a process of talking to the people at the state level about acquiring this property. Um, and we are finally at that point where they are ready to move out, so they are going to surplus this property. And I am asking for them for the state to give it to us. They have a current appraisal of a little over seven hundred thousand, if I remember correctly. Um, and I lay out in this letter, if you haven't read it yet, um, that middle housing is desperately needed here, especially for the employees of the entities that you now we'll see listed here, which include the Georgia Pacific, Confederated Tribes of the Sleds Indians, uh Samaritan Health, Lincoln County School District, and ourselves. Um, and we need places for our employee because right now to get a place that is loanable, you're going to spend around four hundred thousand dollars or more. Um, and nobody can do that, not on the way Jim said, normal people pay. Um, and so this is um my uh attempt at a letter of interest. Justin, have you had a chance to look it over?
Yeah, yes, Mayor Cross. I I I was able to review the letter and the the letter looks good to me, and I think this is kind of the and there's been a lot of backend work, but this is kind of the first step of the official process.
The official process has finally come to us, yes.
So is this considered out of the floodplain since it's up in the hill?
Yeah, it is out of the floodplain. It's relatively flat. It's you know, it's all the bizarre things that we don't normally have to deal with.
I've never been there, so.
I've been up there. It's a burn's way. It's.
So.
May. No question.
Yes.
So I remember reading the letter and 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 you have it in paragraph two of the background. The city of Toledo, Rudy, received an email surplus property notice about O D F property located on Forestry Lane. This is a notice that the property has been determined to be in surplus of the Oregon Department of Forestry, a written notice of sale of interest in acquiring the property for full market value.
Correct. But so I've been working with the folks at the state.
Okay.
But I've got it, but we've got to go through this whole process to get their approval because I'm willing to say, and I think this council would be, I'm willing to say, give it to us with the caveat, it has it has to go for housing. Um, that's what I keep, that's what I keep telling the state. It's like you, you want to put your money where your mouth is? Here's X number of thousand dollars that the state has put out making sure some housing happens.
So it's not going to be a barrier. I'll piggyback on that, and I I know the answer, but just so everybody out in Toledo space understands, this will not turn into another public safety building. This is a totally different sense of house. I understand that, but it's out there understands that, yeah.
So I I don't understand exactly if the if the state says, yeah, you got the green light, then does the city own it? And what happens to turn it into housing? Do we?
So we, as it's currently envisioned, and this may change. That'll become city property. And like our property out on the Alala Slough that's out there on Sturt Event. Well, because how how I'm envisioning this is are the money to build these units will come from these entities. We will form a public-private partnership. And because there's some public entities here, there's some private entities here, and then we also have the tribe. And Senator Anderson and myself have really talked to the tribe about it. They're very interested. Um, and the idea is, say, we build ten townhomes up there. Okay, say we build ten townhomes. Well, if Georgia Pacific puts up the money for four of them, they get four of them. Okay, and we form the public-private partnership to manage the property. But individual units will be individually rented out by the entity that built it, that spent the money to build it.
So essentially, it's not going to be Toledo building and say, if the tribe wants four, they would build four with their money and then they would technically own the buildings but on city property.
But there's but it's city property. It's people living here. It's
Right.
Right. It's all of that, okay? Um.
It's a way to think outside the box to get more housing.
Thank you, and I I I have struggled hard with this. Uh, how do we do it? And I think this is the way we can get this done. It's been done on the East Coast. I think we can do it here.
I think the likelihood is they're just going to give it to you as opposed to selling it to you.
Um, well, let me put it this way. I have directly asked Governor Kotek, and she is in agreement with it, but we have to go through all of the steps. Okay, we have to. We have to go through the process.
Well, then I move to approve the statement.
We must have.
Sorry.
Um, housing is obviously the primary focus, but I think one of the things we've been talking about a lot among this council is a need for innovative uh side. Why am I blanking? Our revenue sources. Um, is there a way that we could also be factoring? Um, we're building some sort of revenue sharing for the city. I know we don't necessarily want to be property owners. We don't, you know, I have heard that kind of thing before. But if we want to get innovative and we want to start thinking.
That's part of what we have to work towards because on the East Coast, how they do it, if the city owns the land, on the East Coast in general, what they end up doing is that they still pay a property tax, but not at the rate the normal.
Is it? Yeah, because part of.
Okay, and I don't know if we want to go that route. I mean, we're not even to that stage yet. Um, I mean, these are all, and I'm glad you brought it up because I've been pondering that. How do we do that?
Because I think I think that property taxes is nice, but there's also, I think, I look at it and say, the city will maybe not be putting up as much in terms of the building of the units themselves. But we are putting up a lot of the infrastructure, the labor. We're making it possible for these entities to uh acquire this housing for their employees. I don't hate the idea of the city being a property owner or having some sort of housing revenue stream, if that's something that's possible to augment the fact that property taxes are are definitely not enough for our cities.
I am hopeless. Here's my hope is that if it looks like we're going to get it, I would like to do an addendum to the U R A, Urban Renewal Agency and Urban Renewal District and add these properties to it. Because then that would give us the ability to possibly do two to three units of our own in there.
Correct. Isn't that within the boundaries already?
No, it goes, it goes right up to it.
Oh, okay.
Because it's just one parcel deep on Highway twenty. We don't go any farther than that. Um, but this is the first step, and if.
Because we're because we're also a player, right?
And that's thank you, and that's thank you very much. And and that's why I wanted to run this by you guys first, and we had to do it before the second. Um, because now it's finally coming to, you know, now it's finally coming out of the stages of I'm tired of talking about. Uh, so I would want to put on our issue tracker, and I'll bring this up later if we pass this tonight, put up on our issue tracker about working with the U R A to get the U R D modified to include those properties.
Sounds great. So what's the second step? B F T? B F D?
B F D.
It's a B F D. No, B F D. Okay, but. Right, oh, are we ready for motion?
What's the second step? You said this was the first step. What's the second?
So for us, the second step is including, and we can do that within two months easy. And include that those properties within our urban uh program, urban renewal district, U R D. Okay, because once we do that, now we have the ability to leverage more funds to be able to build these units, get three units ourselves. If that's what if that's what we decide to go with. Okay. Once we know we're getting the property, that's when the entities that I've mentioned want to sit down and have serious discussions. Right now, we've had the what ifs. If this happens, then what? If we do this, then what? And they're all on board to one degree or another, that this is a great idea because they're hurting for places.
So why would we think we will know if you were?
Um, it's the state, so I'm assuming we won't know for any renewal between two to three months at the earliest.
Those business months?
Yeah.
In any event. No problem with that. You bet.
I'm over it now. I move to approve the city of Toledo to move forward in efforts to acquire the former Department of Forestry property at seven six three Northwest Forestry Drive, seven thirty three Northwest Forestry Drive in Toledo in efforts to provide affordable housing.
Second. Give it the name. Actually, wait, wait, you got it correctly. It's Forestry Road, not Forestry Drive.
No, it's both. You look at our maps, we list both. That's why you notice I don't have the specific address here. I just said Forest Street. Oh, yeah. It's been moved for to approve that the city of Toledo moved forward in efforts to acquire the former Department of Forestry at seven sixty three Northwest Forest Street Drive, slide seven thirty three of West Forest Street Road in Toledo for the development of housing. We'll take a roll call vote. Counsel Coughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Sylvia.
Yes, sir.
Counsel Burns.
Yes.
Counsel President Bush.
Yes.
Counsel Keating.
Yes.
Counsel Mix. And I vote yes. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, everyone. Justin, if we could get that cleaned up and put on city letterhead, that would be awesome.
Yep, I I can work on that.
Thank you. I appreciate all you guys are doing. Hopefully, my hyperlinks will make it through. Um, one of the things that I took, did you see the part where I quoted Bath?
Yeah, I I did see that.
So for those of you that haven't read the letter, um, when we did our housing needs analysis two years ago, uh Eco Northwest, very prestigious firm out of Portland that does these things. The gal said in her very first meeting that this was the most topically challenged city she had ever seen.
That sticks out. I didn't see anything else from that meeting.
Um, and i- i- I used it in this because it's true. Uh, either you're either on the side of a hill or you're in a wetland. Well, if FEMA has their way, we'll never do anything in a wetland again.
I can think of a worse one. Oh, so Washington. Just saying.
But we need this land and we need this flat. It's developable. It's got services to it. It's got everything we need.
Already has a drive.
To get some, yeah, or he has the driveway. Everything's there. Hey, thank you, everyone. It's been a long a long back and forth discussion with several entities at the state level, and I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Rod, for all your hard work.
So next item. Resolution authorizing staff to apply for a housing grant from D L C D for assistance development, development change ordinance and methodology update. Justin.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, that so this uh proposal, uh D L C D has their by every two years, they have a grant application around um housing. Um, so this is kind of the next cycle of housing uh updates and requests um across the state. So they have fundings specifically for housing. They used to only have kind of a broader bucket of technical assistance, but now they have the technical assistance bucket and then the housing specific bucket. Um, and we, the city of Toledo previously received funds for some code updates around the partition subdivision code, which was completed um and some other housing code code updates, which is kind of a long string of development code updates that have been completed. One of the items that was identified in the housing capacity analysis beyond the code updates for the uh was a system development charge uh methodology update. So those are the charges. So when you build a new house, those are the one-time charges that you have for typically wa- water, uh sewer, stormwater, transportation, and then parks. Those are the five. Um, Toledo has four of those. Doesn't currently have a parks um system development charge. Um, our methodology is older now, about fifteen years years old. Um, and this proposal would be looking specifically, uh well, updating the methodology, but really focused on the housing components. Uh, a few years ago now, the city of Newport did a similar project in terms of updating their system development uh charges. So it's kind of looking at how can we modernize the 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 code or the this, how we calculate those. So one like simple example might be for currently for a house, it doesn't matter the size of that house square footage wise, but the same S D C is charged. One thing that Newport has moved to in some other cities where a smaller house would be charged a lower system development charge than a larger house. That's just an example, uh not a proposal right now, but those are the type of things through the process and update that council and planning commission would discuss in terms of what can be done to modernize um the the ordinance and code uh to support housing. Uh, likely, most of this work would happen in uh twenty twenty six, uh early or late twenty twenty five, maybe getting things kicked off. Um, but it's all dependent on the the grant application that we will put we're proposing to put in to D L C D, the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And I can take any uh questions about the proposal.
Any questions, counsel?
The white friends.
So Justin, first of all, I want to commend you and Arlene. Um, and I don't know any other way to say this, but you guys have kept Toledo at the forefront of updating all of our stuff. We are so far ahead that a lot of the communities that I work with and my other um job is part of the Oregon Mayor's Association. I thank you for that, and I'm really looking forward to hopefully we get this grant and get that section modernized and up to uh up and running. Um, thank you. You've stayed on top of this. You keep us getting the grants. You keep us moving forward. Justin, you're doing an outstanding job and you can't leave.
Ever. Oh, right. It's a fiction, too. Now we will.
No, no, can I tell him that every time he shows up?
Um.
He keeps coming back.
And we appreciate him coming back.
Yes, we do. Any other comments, questions?
No, I motion to approve resolution number fifteen eighty two, resolution authorizing staff to apply for the housing grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, D L C D, for the system of development, charge ordinance, and methodology update.
I'll second that.
Moved by Andrew, seconded by Tracy. The first resolution number fifteen eighty two, a resolution authorizing staff to apply for the housing grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, D L C D, for a system development, charge ordinance, and methodology update. I will take a roll call vote. So Coughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Sylvia. Counsel Burns.
Yes.
Counsel President Bush.
Yes.
Counsel Mix.
Yeah.
Counsel Keating. It's in, and I vote yes. Motion carries seven zero. Go forth and conquer, Justin.
All right, thank thank you all.
All right, next up, reports and comments, issue tracker, David.
So a few things to point out to you on the issue tracker, uh on the the items that are the budget committee process review, which is the fifth item down, and then three items down from that, review on the council rules and charter. Let's combine that all and hope to come to you at your August session with with a uh an informed conversation about all of that. And uh relative to the budget committee changes, I'm not sure that we have any thoughts on that in advance. So I know Counsel Keating, that was something that you were promoting. So to me, uh if you would just all be prepared to on that day to uh you know, to, you know, discuss in general what you have in mind, and then uh to that end, and thereafter, if you wish to convene the budget committee, you can do so after that. But I think we need to at least understand in advance what you want the budget committee to be working on. Similarly, the city attorney is uh reviewing, and I am viewing the rules and the charter, uh wanting to align the documents perhaps a little better, and also just to give you our thoughts. On, you know, you, of course, have yours, but to give you our thoughts on what might vary of uh discussion and possible change.
Um, so just to clarify, city council didn't call for the budget committee process to be reviewed. The budget committee did.
Well, I
that's that's not something that we are supposed to be doing on behalf of the budget committee. It was for the budget committee to be convened for that specific purpose.
Well, let's let's bring it up anyway during that that session.
And also, if I'm remembering correctly, and might not be, but it was my understanding that we were going to be considering how close we are um to hiring a new city manager. I was under the impression that we were waiting for the new city manager to be on board before we had the discussion about city council rules, all of that, and wanting them to be a part of that process.
I remember that.
Well, I I would hope by the fourth meeting in August, you will have your city manager.
Yay. With enough time that we feel comfortable that that's the time to be talking about.
There might be an opportunity for an overlapping discussion or whatever that may be.
Um.
So the other thing I've done is based on your conversation tonight, I think I heard a consensus surrounding looking at the U R A expansion, if that property is, since I donated to the city.
Correct.
So I add that to the tracker as well.
Thank you.
Is this an okay time for me to ask about the um the uh progress on the East Lincoln County agreements?
Oh, I'm sorry, fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the other piece I was going to flag is is on this. So we are, we do have the termination agreement fully executed. That's done. We have gone back and forth on these on one round of of occupancy use use of the existing buildings. Uh, we think we have a formula of, you know, we think we're pretty close to what we'll take to get to agreement on that. We will work that up. We will get that to to where the the parties are in in agreement and principle, bring that back to you at that point to make sure that we are aligned with the city council. But by and large, the elements are not a lot different than what you saw in the combined agreement. It's just the agreements have been separated. And I think we've, I think we found a way to get to yes, so we're working, we're working on that.
It seemed like it was their lawyer that suggested that they needed to be separated.
Yes.
That's fine.
They they weren't aware that it was going to be combined. And so when that 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 was, and there was this question of timing.
That's fine.
You know, the city attorney left, but you know, it with them not really having had the opportunity to be fine, that it was you and without.
You got the squeaky chair.
Yeah, I did.
I did too, sorry.
Most. Anything else on the issue tracker? David picked up on what I was going to add, so you guys have a look. All right. Any reports from staff tonight? Nope, seeing none. All right, counsel. Counsel Coughlin.
Nothing here I remember.
For Sylvia? Got nothing for them. Counsel Mix.
Nothing.
Counsel Burns?
Just have a question. Who supplies the water for the refrigerator?
Oh, I'll work on that.
We do. Uh, we've learned that that used to be something that Lisa did, so Krista will pick that up. Lisa did everything.
Yeah, I I will take care of water.
Yeah. And so I.
That's it. Okay, Andrew.
Uh, yeah, just to quick up, pick up Dave, um Justin, uh from I T, and I met today to at least initiate um the conversations about technology upgrades for the council, particularly you know, kind of related to um solving what I think are the biggest challenges that I've been hearing over the last six months. Uh, this is following the um uh the consensus that I that you guys gave to me back in February to kind of act as a liaison with city staff to figure out some ways that we can improve how we function uh with technology up here in uh city council. So just to give you a quick little summary of what we are uh looking at and what uh what the timeline for that proposal that I'm going to bring to you is uh as of right now. Um, one of the things that we're really thinking about is um, you know, the individual devices that we're using, and so we're looking right now at um a solution to, let me say, these are the three items that he and I discussed that needed kind of the most improvement that we also wanted to make sure we were being budget conscious about. It's not about renovating this space. It's not about kind of turning this into, you know, uh high tech, you know, whatever room that's too expensive, too much of an undertaking. So kind of the simplest solution to all of the problems that we could find is what we're going for. So one, improving the Wi-Fi in here, our ability to connect, to use our devices when we're here. Um, Justin's already taken a lot of steps toward that. Um, and I know one of the things that he's going to be doing is this is our uh Wi-Fi access point here, and that's outdated, and I know his plan is to uh to replace that with something that's um that's more modern and will carry more bandwidth into the space. Uh, he's also exploring some options to possibly create a council-specific network. Um, so the Wi-Fi would be specific to us so that it's um it's something that we are accessing and isn't necessarily public.
Sure.
Um.
Don't we already have that with Toledo Secure?
Something that's specific to council to.
Food Security could still be gone while only council.
Right. Um, and uh so that's on the Wi-Fi side. And then the two other items are, one, our ability to see a presentation. Right, somebody is presenting, right? I think, um, you know, even today, we had a presentation. Um, you know, and I we all had to get up, right, um, to go look at it. Our just having that ability um to see what's up there is a challenge. And then, of course, our actual devices. Um, I've gotten some history from city staff as well as from other counselors about kind of these devices that we're using, these very cheap, basic Chromebooks were purchased as such because we wanted just something to be able to access even now. Um, but as the city has been looking at getting council as well on off it on Microsoft three sixty five, um, and also just trying to create some more kind of computing capacity for us so that if we want to have those tools that they're available to us. Um, the solution to both the low-quality devices we have, um, which may also be contributing to our Wi-Fi connectivity, that if these devices are not high-powered, they might not be able to connect to the Wi-Fi, even if the Wi-Fi is strong for other devices.
Correct.
Um, and also the. And also the visibility, we're looking at tablet options, like the Microsoft Surface tablets, that we will also be working into some software solutions, possibly looking at some of the broader capabilities of Zoom so that if we have our devices with us in the meetings, that the presentations up there show up on the screens up here. And that would be cool. So, so looking at one sort of device solution that replaces kind of the problematic devices that I think several of us are struggling.
Personally attacked that you keep pointing.
I also know that yours in particular is, I'm very proud of that. Just kind of recognizing that a lot of the challenges that, that we're having can possibly be solved with one type of like technology solution. And kind of getting that biggest challenge, because I think one of the, one of the issues that I've been trying to address is sort of that recognition that this space, as we have it set up, is not really, when we're thinking about the presentations, when we're thinking about a lot of the information that we receive and how our technology is set up, is not really set up for a city council meeting. Right? The purpose of these meetings is for city council to get information, make decisions, to deliberate. We're currently set up in a way that's probably more technologically designed for the audience more than it is for us.
That's what it's about.
It's not. Right, right.
And, but it needs to be about both.
It needs to be about both, right?
Right.
And so we're trying to figure out a solution that adds to the current setup. And I think Justin's also looking at improving the quality of the projector that we have up there and the way that that's set up. So that's another piece of what's going to be here. But I just wanted to share, that's kind of where we are. Justin and I are going to meet to actually look at the costs and what tech options are out there for us next week with the plan that in, within the next meeting or two, that we'll be coming to you with a proposal of what we're thinking.
So long as you can dumb it down for people like myself.
We couldn't, you, it just, on our, on our Chromebooks.
They're not set up for it.
They're very, very low quality.
Patch it, couldn't patch into the Zoom, Lisa?
Not with the Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
Okay. And even then, I don't know if they're strong enough.
Never mind.
Yeah, no, it was a good question.
Yeah.
It would be a good, normal fashion.
There, there was, at the time that these were purchased, some years ago, the intention was the cheapest, basic solution to listen.
The Wi-Fi, that's a Chromebook itself.
Because the age of our Chromebooks, modern Wi-Fi does not always say that.
They don't communicate.
They don't communicate as well as they should.
They're like stepchildren.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like, it's like trying to watch Netflix on a flip phone.
And something Andrew didn't mention that he's mentioned, that I've heard him say is, with the tablets, we'd be able to write and make notes next to what we're looking at.
Well, and my biggest thing on that one was when he said that whoever's giving a presentation up there could be sitting here because I'm not able to keep going up and down this down the stair. So if I could see it in front of me, something like that, if I didn't go down earlier, I just squinted really hard.
Because if we, if we had the money, then I'd be looking at like solutions to perhaps, you know, replace the DAS with something that's more technologically advanced, that has built-in screens, you know, around it, that are projecting the same thing that is there.
This DAS has been around since like eighteen forty-two.
You know, and I know that.
Nineteen oh three, oh five.
Nineteen oh six. Platinum wasn't invented.
Our previous city manager had, you know, the, the pie in the sky dream of, you know, the, the screens coming down from the ceiling and lots of kind of cool things.
Disco ball and.
Great. And there are, there are definitely a lot of cities that have done some cool things with their chambers to, to add some tech. And, you know, deep down, I'd love to have like, you know, better built-in microphones that can be turned on, turned off more easily, that have lights, all the different things that you could do. Add some technology, but deep down, we don't have the money to do something. We don't need all of those.
We don't need cool, we need efficient.
Right. You know, and I think that part of the reason we're looking at like Surface, the Surface tablets is because of that intention to get on Microsoft three sixty-five and trying to think about what is going to be most compatible with the systems that we're using.
And those are still ones that we'd be able to take back to the house and darn hell's work in there.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we done with Amber? Are we done with you, Amber?
You're never gonna be done.
You said the last part. I can't.
This is my last planned meeting of, uh, set of meetings to attend. I'll still help Krista behind the scenes a little bit for a while, but this will be my last.
Just wanted to acknowledge that it could possibly be the last time we see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you, Amber.
You will be. We'll miss you. You can come back and visit. All the time. Okay. Yeah, I'm surprised Andrew didn't say, but he had his thing to do, but you guys missed a really cool thing at the library. And going over the history, I mean, I learned some more about Toledo and, and I mean, they did, took two hours to go through, you know, the his, quick and dirty history of Toledo. The Toledo incident, the, the man that wrote the book was there, and he spoke. A gal that used to work at the mill was there and talked about the history of the mill, and they had questions at the end. They, I believe, sent an email to all of us today, yesterday, something about the next meeting. And I'll be on the panel to answer questions. I don't know how well I'm gonna do, but I'll be there. But I, it was a packed house. The parking lot was full. It was really neat how many people. And young people, old people, the whole gamut, and it was really, really cool, so.
The next one is on the twenty-first.
And the next one is specifically focusing on where we want to go in the future of Toledo, which is right with what I was boo-hooing about last week. So I think that would be a really great time for us to all show up and kind of throw our hats into the circle.
Your life's birthday, August twenty-first?
I guess it's August.
Yeah, I will be there.
Well, shame on you.
Having a neurosurgeon appointment.
Oh, that's more important. That is more important.
Yes.
We should maybe ask them to delay it.
Schedule it for me.
Or we'll zoom you in.
Zoom you in. That's it.
That's it.
Thank you.
Well, so since you all got to Amber ahead of me, all I can say is, Amber, thank you.
It's been fun.
Very much.
It's been fun. You guys have a really great staff who are incredibly helpful. They like to support each other, and I hope you consider, continue to support them in that endeavor.
Well, I want you to know that even when David's not here, you're welcome to come back and be a facilitator, be whatever it is you want to do.
I would be happy to come back as a facilitator. Stand by and be entertained at our city council meetings.
Yeah, you can come back and sit in the back corner and laugh.
I, I'll come heckle you. How's that?
There you go. There you go. Thank you very much, Amber, for all you've done. We really, really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
The only other thing I have tonight is, remember, Art Oysters and Brews is coming up on the second and third.
Please. And National Night Out, the Friday, or that's coming up, oh, it's the week after. Yeah, 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 on Tuesday, yeah.
For those events, National Night Out, we usually have a booth where we hand stuff out. When we get closer, we'll send out an email, find out who all can be there for that.
Tracy's so good at it.
I did it last year.
For Art Oysters and Brews, if you can make it down, please do. And don't be afraid to mention you're part of the city council. Because one of the things that I've found is a lot of people want to talk in that relaxed atmosphere. And so you can spend, you can spend hours sitting at a table with a group of people, talking about the city, talking about the future of the city, finding out what they think is hugely important to them in a, in a place that is non-threatening, a place that they just want to sit and have fun.
That's what I miss about being in this chat. I'll get to go sell the business.
So please come out for that. It runs noon to, is it five or six on Saturday?
Saturday, five. It's five, yeah.
So noon to five both days.
Yeah.
So come on out. Good music, good times. Might even have a few surprises in store. So look forward to seeing you all there. And those of you that don't live in the area, come on by. For either Saturday or Sunday, come, and it's free to the public. There are art vendor booths. We have live music playing. We have food carts. We have oysters. We have a variety of local breweries that have product there.
And it's gonna have flams this year as well.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, now I'm in trouble.
Oh, really? Gonna have what?
It's bad enough that I love oysters, but my, my wife loves flams. So now we're gonna be, yeah.
The groups are a whole lot of Louis, Louis, Wild Hog in the Woods, and Tyler Spencer on Saturday. On Sunday, Reverend Jane Doe and Johnny Wheels and the Swamp Donkeys.
And they bring a whole crew with them.
Yes, they do.
Okay. Yeah, so, so be aware that there are a couple of these groups that come down to Portland, and they have entourages. They have breweries. And it is hilarious.
The Swamp Donkeys does a lot of fundraisers for the different.
And it's, it's just a good time to be had by all. Please come out, afford your sunscreen, because we are in Toledo. The number of people that asked me about, wow, it's sunny here. What do you guys do? Will you enjoy the sun? Because we're not in the fog zone. So be aware, it'll be like today.
Oh, and I'm gonna plug the port. And for you guys that aren't from here, the port does free boating every Thursday and Sunday. So if you go Sunday to Art Oysters and Brews, you can also do free boating down at the port, and they have the Aquinabean that goes up the river, and they talk about the history of Toledo. We have fun stuff.
We have a lot of good stuff produced. Yes, ma'am.
I, I know it's your turn, but I forgot to mention that I called Brenda at the History Center, and I have an appointment with her tomorrow at one o'clock. She's gonna give me a tour of the History Center. I go through there, and it's just old stuff to me. And so anybody want to join us at one o'clock tomorrow?
Wish I could. I'll be, have a client coming in at one.
I'm excited.
I might join you. Please do. Yeah, I'll write it on, or no, I know we can't look at it.
So, you know, we have a lot to do here in Toledo. We have a lot of things to offer. I know that I'm talking to, at least online, a lot of people that are local. But if you're not local, here's some opportunities to come, enjoy a day, a couple of days with your family. It's kid-friendly. It means Art Oysters and Brews.
And Art Walk. At least keeping.
Art Walk is going to be part of it this year, instead of being on the first weekend of, instead of being on Labor Day weekend.
And Chocolate Block, right?
And Chocolate Block. So we have a ton of kid-friendly things going on between Chocolate Block. We have a kid's mural. If you haven't seen the kid's mural, go down to Rock Park, which is directly across, well, Catty Corner across from Timbers. We have a three-panel mural that our own counselor, Kim Bush, does the backgrounds on, and then kids get to paint in their own things.
And this will be our third year.
This will be our third year, and I will never forget the Loch Ness Monster in the Aquinabay. That was, that was one of the neatest things.
I wanna see, both the first years in here.
It was the, the, or before, afters, National Night.
One of them.
This is.
The kids added their jellyfish and their boats and all this. In the middle there. It was so cute. Oh, my gosh, they had a giant rubber duck. There's another board there, but yeah, this was the first year. The second year's is up now, and we'll be filling in the third year, so. So what happens to these older ones? We don't know yet.
Well, we were gonna auction them off. And I think that's.
But they're kind of big.
But I think we're gonna try and do that at a fundraiser sometime over the winter.
So Kim, are you gonna have that board at National Night Out too this year?
Yes, I will. I'm working on it right now. They're almost done. I'm doing Memorial Field this year.
I know, I'm waiting for Kim to be done.
Sorry, sorry.
I'm watching Amber, don't worry.
I just wanted to offer to council that we have been able to get access back to the city's Facebook page. Yeah, Krista has some experience with social media and will post things. So I have posted a number of things out over the next two weeks. So please go like, share, and draw attention back to your Facebook page again, just so that people interact.
You got it.
Thank you.
Right, and with that, we are adjourned for the regular meeting. We'll take a five-minute recess and come back to you in a second.